Good evening, everyone, and good evening to those that might be watching on Cable Access. And I really want to thank the Lawrence Cable Access TV Station for broadcasting these and for giving us an opportunity to share with the community what we've been doing with the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Program that was funded every year from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I'm Jim Barnes, I'm the Community Development Director. I work in the larger office called Office of Planning and Development. Our Director in the Office of Planning and Development is Teresa Park. And my colleagues in that department include Abel Vargas, the Head of Economic Development for the city, and Pat Ruiz, who's the Director for Inspection Services. And these four departments all work together within OPD. I'm joined tonight by members of the Community Development Staff. Many of you know Lloyd DeJesus, who works with our rehabilitation programs here in the city predominantly, the lead abatement program, but also working with lenders and administering loan funds for purchase rehab. And also Marisol Cologne, who's a project officer, working predominantly with the Community Development Block Grant Program, responsible for monitoring a lot of the projects that are funded under the community development side. And lastly Evelyn Urina, who's the Housing Manager, responsible for coordination and management of all of our housing programs in the Office of Planning and Development. So again, welcome tonight, and I want to walk through a few things with you. Now, most of you are here because you're interested in the possibility of funding. However, we have a responsibility under the regulations from HUD that govern these funds to give you a broader view of what we do with the funds and how they're used. So, we're going to be going through a summary of past activity and what the purpose of the funds are. Also, particularly if you're interested in applying for Community Development Block Grant funding for your organization, in addition tonight, we're going to have a workshop on January 7th that you can come and have your questions answered, and we can sit down and go over the forms with you. There'll be a group session, and then the opportunity for individual sessions as well. So each year HUD awards grants to the city to do neighborhood revitalization, economic development, and improve community facilities and social services. We were required to have a five-year plan, which is called a consolidated plan because it consolidates several individual programs. The current five-year plan covers 2016 through 2020, that's fiscal year 2016, which is the current fiscal year that we're in, through fiscal year 2020. That consolidated plan is based on a review of the data. It lists the needs and priorities of the city and covers housing and community development and economic development. And it supports several HUD programs, Home, C2BG, and what's called the Continuum of Care, which is a set of programs that are available for organizations that provide services to homeless individuals and families and work towards providing sustainable housing options for currently homeless population. So, all of these programs are supported by the Consolidated Plan. The Consolidated Plan is available on our website, and particularly for those of you who are looking at a broader context of what the city does with federal funding or what we want to do with federal funding, that document is available for you to take a look at. And it also sort of defines how we intend to use the money each year over the next five-year period. So HUD has three objectives: sustaining suitable living environments, providing for decent housing, and providing economic opportunities. And we'd like to think that all of our programs, small and large, do one of those three things, and often do all three of those things. And we're monitored by HUD based on that. I want to go over with you some of our past performance, so you can see, get an idea of what we've been doing with some of the funding. So, the housing goal is to expand housing options and to create homeownership. Also, we want to stabilize neighborhoods that were hit hard by the foreclosure crisis in 2008 and 2009. And also respond, not just by rehabilitating, but by also doing housing development. So you see some before and after pictures here of some of the work that we've facilitated. We, in addition to the Community Development Block Grant Program and Home, we also receive a competitive grant from HUD, a lead abatement grant. And we're currently working on a three-year, $2.75 million lead abatement grant that Lloyd and Evelyn administer. And this is some examples of houses that have been improved with the lead abatement program. We also, with the assistance of the Attorney General's Office, have been working on dealing with a whole range of problems with properties that we call physically distressed. Some of them have been foreclosed upon, others are in probate, some have been long neglected by the owners, either an absentee owner or an owner that's not available to maintain the property. And this is one example of where we've intervened and gotten some good quality rehab. Another one where we had the weeds cleared away. We also are involved with providing financial assistance in the form of long-term loans for new construction. And this is new construction work at 108 Newbury Street. So this is a medium-sized, we do individual, we provide assistance to individual houses. As you saw in the first slides, we provide long-term financing along with the state and with banks for medium-sized projects. And then we also get involved in pretty big projects, like the old part of the Malden Mill complex. This is Arlington Mill up on Broadway, and Loft 550 Phase 1 and 2. This is a shot of, I think this is, this is actually the courtyard, oh, lower right is the courtyard between Phase 1 and Phase 2, about 65, 70 units in each one of those two phases. So this is a list of some of our major housing developments over the last five years: Union Crossing, Loft 550. We've been involved with Breda Rose's Housing homeownership projects for a long time. And the Duck Mill along Union Street is currently under construction. We also, in addition to providing for new construction, we really want to provide for new homeownership opportunities. So each year, we try to fund about $200,000 worth of down payment assistance that helps us provide help to 10 to 15 new homeowners within the city. Another part of our program is, goes beyond fiscal development towards human services and human development. And we're constantly trying to increase the amount of social service activity that's available within the city, and we've got a great group of partners that help us do And the next few shots are examples of projects. Each project, we go out and we monitor once a year, and when we go out to do our monitoring, we take some photos of the clients and some of the work that's going on. And what you see here, these three slides are part of our youth development, leadership development programs that will continue to be a high priority for the city. Another high priority that fits in with our economic development objectives is a series of ESOL programs, English for Speakers of the Second Language. It's really important to meet our economic development goals, to have residents that are job, who are job-ready, and the ESOL programs are part of that initiative. Also, the YMCA does a really excellent job in providing skill enhancement in the music field, and this is some shots of their music clubhouse. We also try to be sensitive to community-wide needs that focus on specific neighborhoods, not so much a program or facility, but just neighborhood initiatives. And so we've, in the past, have been able to provide some small amount of financing to the National Night Out Program through the Lawrence Mathuen Community Coalition. And here's a shot of another ESOL program. Now, this is a very popular program that we've had been funding for a number of years, and last year it did not get funded, the Recreation and Exercise Program at the Council of Aging did not get funded by the Community Development Program, but it has been picked up by other funding. This coming year, it'll be picked up through the Mayor's Health Task Force and our Healthy Active Living Program under the Mayor's Health Task Force. So I'm happy to report that this exercise program will continue and hopefully will grow. It's a very popular program. Lastly, we have certain neighborhood development initiatives going on, and the most important one is the Park Improvement Program. So just in the past five or six years, this is the list of parks that, with the exception of the last one, that we've been able to do major improvements on. The last on the list, Burgoyne and Gagnon Parks, we've applied for funds from the state to renovate or to put in new playground equipment for those new parks, and we hope to be hearing before the end of this month on the results of that. The way we work with the Park Development Program is that the state has funds available, and we have to share the cost. And it's typically 60% state and 40% local government, or 70, 30, each year it might be a little bit different, but that's been a highly successful program for us over the past several years. So, one of the things that we wanted to bring to your attention is that we're always listening for community input, and either at public meetings like this, or certainly at public hearings before the city council, and we hear from the city councilors who represent all of you, and we make changes each year in our allocation and our choice of programs based on the input from citizens. So we try to stay the course with broad, general themes, but we do make certain adjustments each year with your input. So I want to encourage you to ask questions, provide comments at any time, and you can contact me, you can contact Marisol Cologne, and we'll make sure that your input is brought to bear and brought to the attention of the mayor as we go through our funding decisions year in, year out. So this is a picture of what the funding has looked like since 2010. And you can see that the funds have gone down, and even when Congress provides steady funding, the growth of the populations and communities in the southwest and west have meant that Lawrence and communities like us in the northeast get a smaller piece of the pie. And so in 2010, we had 1.7 million. We're anticipating again this year around 1.4 million for the Community Development Block Grant Program. For the Home Program, which is dedicated to housing assistance of one form or another, and you saw the slides of the big projects and little projects we do with the Home Program, we're down to about $600,000 a year, and at the beginning of this decade, we were at a little more than $1 million. So we can still do a significant amount of work with the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs, but not as much as you would like and that we would like as a result of the changes in funding. Now, in addition to the five-year plan, we have a one-year action plan, and that's what we're going to be talking about tonight and talking about again on January 7th at the workshop. And we anticipate $1.4 billion in community development funding and $600,000 in the Home Program. We need to tell you that we have some long-term commitments for that 1.4 million. So even though that amount comes down to us every July as a result of our application, it's not all available to be allocated for community projects on a year-to-year basis. We have a long-term commitment to match our lead grant. We are committed to the park improvements that I mentioned to you. We also have what are called Section 108 loan repayments. Under a provision of the law, many years ago, about 15 years ago, we financed the parking lot at the Gateway Parking Lot on Canal Street. And that's a loan that's paid back over time through a small portion of the Community Development Block Grant Program. So all these things are long-term city commitments, and they're in the budget that's finally submitted to the City Council, and it's a public document that, you can see past budgets on our website, and you'll see the proposed budget once we get all the projects arrayed come March or April. That'll be, again, on the city's website for you to review and comment on. So, what most of you in the viewing audience and here tonight are interested in, who's eligible for funding? And first off, nonprofits can carry it out. Excuse me. When I lose my voice, Marisol has a standing order to take over from me, and so she makes sure I have a water bottle with me. So nonprofits carry out public service activities to serve low and moderate income persons. And city departments can also apply for funds, and in the past, the Council of Aging has applied for those funds. We are capped by the law to 15% of the allocation for public service activities. So based on some of our past commitments and our anticipated funding, we're going to make available for nonprofit applications this year approximately $200,000. So the challenge for us is to allocate funds in a reduced funding environment. And as you can see, 15% of 1.7 is a lot more than 15% of 1.4 million. We've done a few things over the past two or three years. We've tried to simplify the request for proposals, the application form, we have minimum and maximum grant amounts, we've established certain priority categories in a funding So this year, we're proposing a funding plan that looks like this: putting most of our money into youth leadership and development programs, some into food, nutrition, and health, quite a bit into education and training, including a priority for ESOL training, a really small amount in housing, and the reason for that is that we allocate all of our home dollars based on the statute towards housing, so we think that we can reduce the amount available for housing under the funding plan, for a total of $210,000. Now, we have two priority categories. One is within the youth category, we really would like to see activities that include some employment of local youth as part of the program. And secondly, within the education and training category, we are interested in classes for ESOL, and particularly for advanced classes. This is a change from last year. The city council last year gave us feedback and input that of all the ESOL classes, there really are not enough classes in the advanced category. And so we are going to be looking carefully at application, and hopefully we will entice some applicants to provide for advanced ESOL training in addition to the basic training. Now, this is something that is very important, I want to call your attention to, to remind those who have applied in the past, and to any potential new applicants, that for the nonprofit that's applying, we need to see evidence of an up-to-date report, annual report to the Secretary of the Commonwealth, a similar report if you're fundraising. If you do fundraising, then you have to report to the Attorney General's Office, and we want to see evidence of an IRS 990 filing. Now, if you are not an incorporated nonprofit organization, if you're more loosely organized organization, then we ask that you apply through a fiscal agent, and you can, we can provide you with a number of nonprofit organizations that might be approached to serve as your fiscal agent and apply on your behalf for your program, and that is done on a regular basis, so it's not out of the ordinary. Is that correct, Marisol, that we get at least one or two every year from a fiscal agent? So if you're not an incorporated nonprofit but a loosely organized organization or community group, feel free to let us know if you need help in identifying a fiscal agent, we can help you. Now, this is our timeline, and it is intended to give those who might be applying for funds plenty of time to put together an application. It gives us and our advisory committee, that's made up of seven or eight residents from the community, it gives the advisory committee an opportunity to review them. One particularly important part of the whole application process is a set of presentations. Each applicant is expected to make a presentation to the Community Development Advisory Board, and we've scheduled that for February 18th, and that'll be at the South Lawrence Middle School, the auditorium of the South Lawrence School. So keep that date in mind. We're talking about a three-minute elevator speech, and we, it really is an excellent way for you to present your program to the Community Development Advisory Board. Also, I might add that it's a competitive environment, and even those that might not, who are new to the process and might not receive funding one year, it's a great way to get information out to a broad group of people and start the ball rolling for next year and increase your potential for funding in a future year through that presentation. So we anticipate city council review and approval sometime in the middle of April, and we would be notifying you at about the same time or shortly thereafter, and then working with you on preparing contracts. The folks that work on the Community Development Program, Community Development Block Grant are these: Angie Gill, Kate, myself, Marisol, Susan Fink, Evelyn Urina, and Wendy Lazon. This is the group of folks that any one of us might be involved with communication with you, asking for additional information, might be involved in monitoring your project, might be involved in providing some level of technical assistance or advice. So if you have a question, you can feel free to contact any one of these individuals. However, most specifically, the two people to contact would be Marisol or myself. For the preparation of an application for funding, the primary contact should be Marisol, and her telephone number and email is there. If you're interested in providing more input or feedback on the city's priorities, if you have questions about any of the projects that we've funded in the past, what their status is, the status of construction work on any of our park projects, the status of any of the housing applications or housing projects that we're working on, anything that's of broader policy or status of a project, feel free to contact me, and my email address is there for you as well. So with that, I'm going to close it and ask if there are any questions from the audience, and then if there, once we finish with the questions, then we'll look forward to your application, look forward to answering any questions that you have during the month of January as you prepare your applications. So, any questions from the audience? Let me just then add a couple things. One is that the request for proposal and the application form are on the website. They're on the left-hand side of the cover page, the homepage of the city website, under Quick Links. It happens to be the second item under Quick Links. It's, I think it's something like 2017 C2BG application. It's a fillable form. We still don't have the technology to receive your application electronically, so it has to be hand-delivered, and we are looking for two copies, Marisol, two copies? We're looking for two copies. We, as I said, the application is on a fillable form. If for some reason you're running into problems, please let us know. In the past, we found that sometimes the computer, the individual computer software needed to be updated in order to type into the form, and we can help you identify and troubleshoot that problem if that exists. But it's, and we left enough space, we wanted But it's, and we left enough space, we want to keep this simple, so we think we've left enough space. We looked at last year's applications, and each one was, that we got was well-written, and all the answers fit into the spaces pretty nicely, so you're not really going to need to add additional attachments. You will have to attach the proof that you've filed, the three reports that I referred to, so that's one attachment that you'll have to put on there. I think that's about the only amplification that I think that is appropriate for tonight. Anything else? Yeah, Gary?
Yes, Jim, is the timeline you presented on the slide, is that on the website?
Yes, that, I think that's within the RFP itself. If it's not, then it's something that we probably should put on the website, and we'll add it, because it may not be, actually, that's an abbreviated one. We have an even more extensive one that sort of guides our internal processes so that we don't fall behind. And incidentally, we build into this snow day, so, and it's within the RFP, but I'll mention it to you, that if on the application due date, it happens to be a day when the city offices are closed, then the application would be due on the next open weekday, whatever that might be. And that's right in, we've had such bad weather the last couple of years that we've put that caveat in there. Other questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much.